Mati Omatel, I call this meeting on June 2nd, 2025 to order at 7:03 PM. Welcome Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I will first start with our land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognized that we occupied the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Leishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Hanser Ramara.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Before we proceed with the rest of our meeting, I do want to take a quick moment just to give some words about recent events near and far in our, both in our community and outside. They have become notable in our community and do warrant acknowledgement. For those who weren't aware, there was a recent incident in which unfavorable flyers were plastered across the city and Albany PD was very swift in addressing it after they were notified and looking into the matter. I personally have caution against making any premature statements without first having all my facts in order as it is important for me to let our professionals do their job without any political noise. But this in no way trivializes the reaction folks have because as fellow humans in our communities, we all do have feelings. So I wanted to take a moment to validate your feelings if you feel, felt harmed in any way. Likewise, recently in nearby Berkeley, several of our community members were subjected to violence during a peaceful gathering over one of the overpass. And I just want to state unequivocally that hate and tolerance have no place in our community and that physical violence is never okay, emotional violence is never okay. From incidents happening in DC to incidents happening in Colorado, to incidents happening in Texas, the list goes on. I'd rather not labor ourselves with unpacking more of that trauma. But what I do want to acknowledge when it concerns issues like this is that we should never take our anger and our rage out on innocent folks who may have a connectedness or rooted in any country or government that conduct activity that we may not agree with. And I think we owe it to ourselves to be better humans and to hold each other accountable in that regard. But in that same line of thought, I do want to acknowledge as well that beyond the conversations of what is going on in Gaza, we still are dealing with the litany of issues, both again near and far. We're dealing with indiscriminate raids inching closer and closer to home and that's not okay. We are dealing with folks of color being criminalized and villainized simply for existing. Our folks feeling more brazen to act on unfavorable behavior. And I'll just give a quick anecdote that me as your mayor, I was chased down the street by a white man not that long ago. And you know, though I don't think it's necessarily rooted in racism, I do stop to wonder, had I not been a white man, would that have been the outcome? So I just want to acknowledge that there's a lot going on in our community and I want to acknowledge the people who who are feeling emotionally, physically, and verbally harmed. We've had incidents recently with our high school students as well, our Asian American community members. And so I don't want to use this moment to just kind of pack on all the pain and the trauma that everyone's dealing with and trying to process. But I do want to rather use this moment, as I've shared with recent local high school students before coming here, that we owe it to our ancestors to be better and to catalyze change. We owe it to our ancestors to look within ourselves and look into, look to our neighbors and see the good in our community, see the good in fellow folks. Because we are in a time of needing protection, of needing healing, and needing our community. That said, I do wanted to make sure I take that moment to acknowledge what has been going on in our, our community and outside of our community because again, these external instances of the moment do have an impact on how we see ourselves and how we feel about ourselves and our skin, our identities, no matter where we come from, no matter what our race, ethnicities may be, our cultural values. Our cultural values should all be celebrated, our differences should all be celebrated. And that's something I've been emphasizing as I've been on the, my world tour of giving graduation speeches these past couple months. I'll just close it out with that and would like to proceed with our meeting as we see fit. With that, we'll move on to ceremonial matters. We do have a proclamation for migraine and headache awareness month to receive, be received by Fay Bream, sorry if I'm mispronouncing the last name, who is a patient volunteer advocate with the Headache Alliance. And Councilmember Jordan, would you do the honors of reading?
Pardon for the delay. I am excited to read this. In recognition of migraine and headache awareness month, June 2025, whereas headache disorders including migraine, cholesterol headache, new daily persistent headache, spinal CFF, CSF leak, orofacial pain disorders and other neurological headache diseases affect more than 40 million Americans and over 1.1 billion people worldwide. And whereas headache diseases are among the leading causes of disability globally, disproportionately impacting women, veterans, and historically marginalized communities. And whereas an estimated 4 million Americans live with chronic migraine and experiencing symptoms 15 or more days per month, yet access to specialized care remains limited. And whereas there is a severe shortage of headache specialists, with fewer than 800 certified headache medical medicine specialists nationwide, creating significant barriers to care, particularly for rural and underserved communities. And whereas the symptoms of headache disorders extend beyond head pain, often impacting vision, cognitive function, balance, and daily activities. And whereas stigma and misinformation have historically stifled research, treatment innovation, and public awareness, leaving many patients undiagnosed and untreated. And whereas individuals with headache disorders are at an increased risk for developing depression and suicidal ideation, underscoring the urgent need for comprehensive care and mental health support. And whereas all individuals living with headache diseases deserve equitable, timely, and affordable access to effective treatments and accommodations to improve their quality of life. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council does proclaim 2025 as migraine and headache awareness month in Albany, California, and encourage all citizens, healthcare professionals, and policymakers to support awareness, research, and improved access to care for headache diseases. Signed, Mayor Robin Lopez.
Fay, if you would just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I appreciate this and I just want to say on, thank you on behalf of the 40 million Americans who suffer from headache disorders. And also I'd like to say if you'd like to learn more about what it's like to have a migraine or a headache disease, you can go to the site, flagsforheadache.org. And there you will, you can go to the stories and you can hear a handful of the 40 million people tell you what their symptoms are like and how they feel. So it's really important that we address this issue and heaven knows, do something about it. Because I've been part of the group that's been going to Headache on the Hill lobbying Washington DC for several years and it takes a whole lot to get them to do anything. It's really slow and they're really tight with the buck. And migraine sufferers are not seeing too much progress. So anything we can do, and when you go to the site, if you can, after you see the stories, if you can go where it says, what you can do to help, there is, there are letters you can write to your, to your representatives and senators and plug it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can we get a photo? Everybody doesn't have to come, I mean just.
No, we're more than happy to.
You're so nice.
And Vice Mayor McQuaid, already one step ahead of me, will be reading.
Make a comment?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I appreciate the proclamation in general, but also because I learned something. I didn't realize that people could have a continuous subarivo spinal fluid leak. My wife had one that was induced by a spinal tap and it was horrific for her. So to think that some people live with that is really stressing, disturbing and yeah, my empathy is keen for that. Thank you.
I was just gonna say Fay and her daughter Heidi, who have been part of my Girl Scout troop growing up. You know, it's, it's difficult to see the struggles that, you know, both have gone through. Heidi was a teacher and couldn't continue to teach in the class. But you know, gratefully during COVID, Heidi was able to put her teaching skills to use via Zoom as we did our Zoom Girl Scout meetings because those were things that she could participate in, but not necessarily all the physical activities. So I just really want to applaud her for that and appreciate the, the hard work and the efforts that you guys are putting in for this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanser Ramara, for helping to facilitate this. And thank you to our guests for allowing us the privilege and the honor to help give visibility to the cause. Thank you. With that said, Vice Mayor McQuaid over there in the corner, ready to get shaken too. We'll have our proclamation for LGBTQIA plus month to be received by Judy Kerr. And a crew. I like it.
I was gonna say, anyone can come, come on up. City of Albany proclamation in recognition of LGBTQIA plus Pride Month, June 2025. Whereas the City of Albany prides itself on being a community that celebrates diversity and strives toward, towards inclusion. And whereas the Albany City Council has affirmed that the council welcomes and values all of our diverse community members, regardless of where they are from, who they love, how they worship, how they look, their gender identity, their abilities, their economic status, or how they vote. And whereas the City of Albany has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and ally LGBTQIA plus community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas June has become a symbol, symbolic month in which the LB, LBG, LGBTQIA plus community and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And whereas Albany is joining with other cities across the United States to recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. And whereas the City of Albany recognizes and appreciates both the Albany High School Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club, a place where queer students have a safe place to come together and have fun. And Albany's Pride, an LGBTQIA plus advocacy group for Albany Unified School District for their ongoing work to ensure a positive environment for LGBTQIA plus students and parents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council does hereby recognize the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month in the City of Albany. And the Progress Pride flag shall be flown June 1st through 30th at Albany City Hall, the Albany Community Center, and the torch located at Solano Avenue and Kirat Boulevard. Signed, Robin Lopez, Mayor.
So for those of you who might be wondering, I'm going to try to say what LGBTQIA plus stands for. It, it's a historical designation that has grown over the years and it stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, and everybody else. You're all in the family. We're happy to have you. I have a statement here from the high school or the school district's pride club that I'd like to read. And I have a personal statement I'd like to read, but I first like to introduce my, my crew. My crew is Barbara Ridley, who is my spouse, my wife, my partner, my love in life for 30, how many? 35 years. And then came along my daughter Abby, who is my daughter for 33, not four yet. And then in the last couple of years, her partner Elliot Park, who is just as happy to be queer along with the rest of us. So, so we're, we're very glad to all be here. But from the high school, from the Albany Pride Group, I'd like to say thank you to the Albany City Council for this proclamation recognizing lesbian, bisexual, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, and everybody else, Pride Month. It's meaningful to see the city honor the diversity, resilience, and value we bring. At the same time, even in a hometown as inclusive as Albany, many LGBTQIA plus individuals still, still do not feel safe or comfortable showing up publicly. And the reason I'm reading this tonight is exactly that. Some of those folks are not comfortable showing up publicly. Even to accept a gesture like this, it is a challenge. That absence is not a silence. It's a reminder that we still have work to do and we're working on it. So I appreciate all of you who are doing that. The absence is not a silence. It's a reminder we have still work to do. We accept this proclamation with gratitude and a shared commitment to making Albany a place safe where everyone truly belongs. That's from the school folks. And then from me and from us, it's an honor and a privilege to accept this proclamation on behalf of the generations of ancestors and fellow Albany residents who identify as LGBTQIA plus. And on behalf of the children of the residents of Albany who still struggle with prejudice and discrimination that increasingly colors our days in this political climate. We are a rainbow of people and we count everyone as part of our arc of support. Thank you for raising the pride flag for the first time in Albany just over eight years ago and every year since. It is really, for our community, it means so much to drive down the street and see that flag. So thank you for that. Thank you for acknowledging our shared struggle for equity, especially for, in these challenging times. And thank you for all the work you do. Thank you.
Oh, we got a picture too.
It is picture day.
I don't know if, I don't see it. Okay, yeah. One more. Okay, you check because. Okay. You check, because my phone is so... Okay.
Judy, before you and your crew storm out and cause more ruckus in these streets of Albany, good ruckus, I want to give a few words, and I'm sure some of my colleagues here on the dice might as well. I do want to share as a father of a child who previously identified as non-binary. When I first came to Albany and I was thinking about running for council, like, that was the first thing on my mind, protecting my daughter, because I know it's not safe for folks who do not conform to the status quo. And I remember talking to Councilmember Jordan about this, that being one of my first questions. Well, if I run, is my child gonna be safe because of how they identify? And I was pleasantly surprised, and I was very heartened to hear a lot about the inclusivity that Albany does try to strive for. I think that's what sets apart our little city, because we do big things with our hearts. But I also just want to acknowledge your point and emphasis about folks within the community that still deal with the litany of issues. One of my nephews who recently came out, he's my godson, actually, he was subjected to a lot of physical violence simply for being gay. And he was subjected to a lot of online harassment, and I do not want to repeat what was written to him. But he's also, I don't know violence, but he's also not a little person by any means. He towers over me. And he had enough, and he had to handle business appropriately when he was subjected to more assaults. And I say this because I was livid, and I was pissed, as was my sister, his mother, that it requires an act of self-defense for the issue to get addressed. And not just a mere act of self-defense. We're talking about a car, two cars, fifteen teenagers coming to assault and jump one child for being gay. That is the reality a lot of young people live with, that they don't dare share because it frightens them to, one, out themselves, but to, two, to put themselves front and center in harm's way, because it just opens up the door for more attacks. Thankfully, my godson lives in a household where he does have that support, that the other issue is not every child had that support. Not every child had that structural framework within their home to support them for who they are, how they were born, how they choose to live, who they want to engage with. And I think me, you know, being the father to a child who had identified as non-binary, and my child has gone through their ways and, you know, still figuring themselves out, and that's the beauty of life. We, I don't think we ever 100% figure out who we are. But being in that position of trying to understand what can I do to be a better parent, what can I do to be a better person, when it concerns specific groups like this that have been historically, not just marginalized, but subjected to violence, and then seeing it right in your face in real time, it hurts. And so I'm happy that folks like you show up. And I just want to say that I applaud you, and I'm proud of you for showing up and being present, because it does take a lot of guts to show up and show out, and then go out there and cause some good ruckus. Anyone else on the dice have anything else to share? I'm more than happy to let you all go at it. All good. All right. Well, thank you very much, Judy and crew. All right. Moving on to item number five, City Manager Report. City Manager, may the council have your report.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We have an upcoming safety event on Saturday, June 7th, from 10:00 to 11:30 by the Albany Fire Department. They're holding a fire drill at Gateview Condominiums, which is 555 Pierce Street, followed by a community safety expo with information from the Police Department, Recreation and Community Services staff, Community Development, Albany Cert Incorporated, and Waste Management. A reminder in that area, parking is limited, so please consider alternative modes of transportation, and a lot of information available. And rest assured, more of these mini expos to come, but this is a great opportunity to get to know your public safety departments directly. We have a blood drive at the Community Center on June 3rd, which is tomorrow. There's still space, so you can sign up at redcrossblood.org and entering the code ALBANYCA for an appointment slot. They will also be back in September for another blood drive. The Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Event that I've mentioned previously and we've promoted is happily, fully booked. Apologies to those who weren't able to book, however, but this is a great sign that hazardous waste material is going to the right place. And appreciation to StopWaste.org for their work in facilitating this event, and also Golden Gate Fields for being willing to continue to share the space to host this event. Hopefully, you've seen the banners up for our upcoming event, one at the Community Center, and it is our Fourth of July in the Park, which is always a can't miss. Another great event is planned, July 4th, from 11:00 to 3:00, and this is a Friday. Family-friendly, as always, with live entertainment, food, and activities for everyone. So please join us for that event. We also have free ice cream, as usual, from the Chamber of Commerce at 12:00 PM, and that goes quickly. Appreciation to a great, wow, a great turnout at the May 20th Citywide Planning Expo. I know some of our council members were able to make it, so thank you for joining us, and to all the staff that put a lot of energy into this planning expo. Three major plans, initiatives were discussed within this group setting. Our Street Tree Management Plan, which is underway, the Active Transportation Plan, which the council has discussed a few times and continues to work through, and also the Watershed Management Plan. The feedback from these workshops or expo will be incorporated into each of those planning processes going forward, and there are certainly more opportunities for community engagement through the draft plans and also different meetings. So please continue to monitor both our website, eNotifi, and eNews as we reach out to engage with community groups on those citywide planning efforts. I think we had over eighty people attend, which was a great turnout for a midweek event. And also, while we had warm weather for a day or two, it'll come back, we have put out reminders for young tree care, given that young trees were well-planted recently, and really just trying to make sure that they are monitored, either watered, or water levels are monitored to know when to water. So there are some really helpful tips that we've put on our website under the City News section, which is now much easier to find on our new website. So please take a look at that if you are one of the fortunate folks that had a young tree planted to help maintain the life of those young trees as they're a little fragile. And that completes my report. Thank you. And also, I wanted to mention Summer on Solano, which is Saturday, June 14th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Whoa. Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero, for the accountability. Do we have any questions from members on council? Yes?
Is the fire drill at 555 Pierce open to the public?
Yes, it is. Granted, it's a bit of a little limited space, but it absolutely is.
Further questions from council? Not seeing any. Do we have any questions from members in the public? All right. Thank you again, City Manager. Moving on now to Good of the City. This is for attending to provide council comments, information, and questions on items that are not on the agenda. Give us one second. There we go. I do see a couple folks here in person. Do we have any folks online?
Yes, hi. My name's Brian Martin, and I just wanted to highlight something I sent in email earlier today, that there's some news coming out about the use of Flock cameras that read license plates that Albany recently made a, set up a contract for, and it looks like they're, from the reports, it looks like they're being used by people outside of cities and across state lines and things to try to track people's whereabouts for all sorts of reasons that Albany might not want to see happening. And so I wanted to look forward to hearing more about what the city's doing about this and what its policies are and what it's actually, how these cameras are actually being used by us and by people outside our community at an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Milin Michael, and I'm a junior at Albany High. Tomorrow marks one year since the City Council voted to create a subcommittee to explore ending tobacco sales in Albany. Since then, students have spoken up at meetings, sent emails, and stayed involved, because the issue really matters to us, even though our seniors are graduating. I want you to know that we, the juniors and the underclassmen are still here. We take, we care just as much and half-foot, and we'll continue to put effort in. We would appreciate if we could hear back from the subcommittee and work on the issue together. We also understand that the City Council has a lot of important things to deal with, but it honestly feels unfair to start something like a subcommittee and then not follow through, especially when residents, including students, have been actively trying to be a part of the process. And since Albany has a history of leading when it comes to public health, that's something we're proud of, and we're excited about the idea of living in a tobacco-free city where future generations of students can grow up in a healthier environment. So please don't let this effort fade away. We're still here, and we're ready to keep working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. I am Dr. Stephen Alpert. I and over a dozen individuals have requested that the council justify why Albany falls under the minimum state mandate of notifying those within 300 feet of new construction, regardless of project size, when in fact, for years, other California cities have used wider and varied notification to distinguish between small and large-scale projects. Alerting only those within 300 feet clearly in the midst of public discourse, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to propose, and the council to then push through new projects, no matter how inappropriate, with minimal awareness and input from the public. Such was the case for the oversized five-story modern box posed for 1600 Solano Avenue. Only 73 properties were alerted about the project, which clearly is not functionally appropriate nor harmonious with its surroundings, in total violation of Albany's planning and zoning mission statement shown here. Tonight marks three years since June 1, 2022, when the council, under the direction of then-Mayor Jordan and Vice Mayor Tiedemann, approved that project despite overwhelming community opposition. Of note, current council members Hanson Romero, Lopez, and Mickey were not on the council in 2022, and then Councilwoman McQuaid appropriately called the project disappointing. During that June 1 meeting, 43 individuals voiced legitimate concerns about 1600 Solano, and Vice Mayor Tiedemann commented on the intensive feelings and forwarded emails. Despite these concerns and multiple calls for continuance, including one from Ms. McQuade, then Vice Mayor Tiedemann urged immediate approval, offering that, in his experience, approaching the applicant to discuss suggested mitigations would not be useful. Councilman Jordan has written he felt compelled to vote in favor of the project for fear of a lawsuit brought by the applicants. Perhaps a lawsuit might have occurred, but we will never know, because the council did not approach the applicant to consider any of the mitigations. In addition to being incompatible with the adjacent Craftsman era buildings, the most cited concern in opposition to the project was increased traffic congestion at the dangerous Ordway-Tacoma-Solano intersection, as the proposed building had no resident parking nor a drop-off area for children going to a first-floor dental office. Incredibly, Community Development Director Bond stated that the project would not impact local traffic. There was no factual basis for that statement, given that no specific traffic study was conducted. Moreover, two attorneys challenged the city's assertion that Solano Avenue was a transportation corridor. Prior to the 2024 elections, I circulated a legal-sized notice highlighting how the council railroaded through 1600 Solano over the concerns of the community. As is evident, one of the Albany Four Duo is no longer on the council, and Councilman Jordan received the least number of votes for the three open positions. Albany residents appear to have registered their displeasure at city officials who disregard their community concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no more public comments? All right. Thank you again.
If I may, Mayor. Council received a letter from YIMBY Law about a month ago. I'll read part of it. It's "On the subject of public notice requirements for residential development proposals, specifically regarding policies that would have different requirements for projects based on their type or location, notice requirements that differ based on single versus multifamily developments or by the underlying zoning category in which those projects would be located violate California and federal fair housing requirements. Adoption of any such policies would stymie efforts to provide affordable housing and open the city to costly litigation that it would be sure to lose. California Government Code Section 65008 voids any action by government agencies which would have the effect of housing discrimination. Specifically, 65008B1 prohibits the enactment or administration of ordinances that have the effect of discriminating on the basis of income status or against multifamily residential property specifically. Conditions are not limited to disapproval or requirements for the project that would render it economically infeasible." This letter is available from the city. Anybody interested can email cityclerk@albanyca.org.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. Before I move on, I do want to recognize that there were a couple other questions. One, City Manager, was about the Flock cameras and concerns about them being used by outside agencies. I know this was addressed when we had voted for use of the Flock cameras, but wanted to take this opportunity to have public clarification on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, per city policy, we do not, I repeat, do not share that information for any immigration enforcement purposes, and it is a localized use for the reasons specifically outlined in that staff report, which are maintained by the Act of the Council through that record.
Thank you very much. And then, is there any status update on the Tobacco Subcommittee planning to meet in the near future?
I'm happy to touch on that briefly. We staff did receive a presentation from County Public Health, the Division specifically for Tobacco Control. I understand that, per that public agency and the work by their staff, that they are to conduct a public opinion poll. So I would look to Alameda County Public Health as the driver of that information at this point in time, and happy to coordinate with our own subcommittee in terms of obtaining more information. But as my understanding from checking in with the county staff, the work is underway and still a lot to be learned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendars, staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the council. Do any members of the council wish to pull any items on the consent calendar? Yes, seven, eight? Seven, eight? Any other items from council members? Not seeing any? Not seeing any. Uh, any members of the public who wish to pull any item? All right. Um, seven, eight. Councilmember Mickey?
So seven, eight is nominating submission of three priority conservation areas to the Association of Bay Area Governments. Governments, sorry. I want to thank staff for leading this effort to kind of get us prepared and ready to be able to receive future, potentially future funding grants to help us kind of meet our goals that we've set in our general plan and in our waterfront planning. I think the one thing that I did want to note was that while this matches our existing general plan and our existing kind of measures that we as a community have passed, it in no way prevents us in the future from having future land use decisions about what might happen at the waterfront. But I applaud staff for the efforts right now to get us prepared for potential future funding sources to help us kind of create the best waterfront we can and to plant trees in our much-needed urban forest and protection of our Albany health. Now, I just wanted to thank staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Nick, uh, Mickey, for the acknowledgement. Seeing no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Hi. You want to move the consent calendar?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, City Clerk.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuade?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight for our presentation, we have a presentation on fiscal year 2526 contract with Alameda County for additional library services.
Yes, good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Lopez, Isabel Lutuck, Assistant City Manager. So the item before you tonight is the annual fiscal year 2526 contract with Alameda County for additional library services. This items, item comes to you at this time every year. As you know, the Albany Library is a branch of Alameda County Library and is open to the public, a total of 41 hours per week. Of the 41 hours, 25.5 hours are contracted with Alameda County Library for the additional hours. The fiscal year 2526 agreement between the City of Albany and the County of Alameda for the contracted hours of library services remains the same in the amount of 725,440. And the city does levy two tax special taxes that were approved by voters to cover the, the cost of those 25.5 hours. And as you saw in the financial section of the staff report, we have plenty of funding to cover the contract for this year. And we do carry a reserve based on a fund balance because of the hours, the reduced hours during the pandemic. So we will continue to monitor that and potentially, we're not opposed to doing some improvements and updates to the library in the future. So with, as part of this presentation, the library staff is here to provide information to the council on the Alameda County budget, as well as library programs and services that were provided over the last year and upcoming year. This concludes my report. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I will turn the floor to the library staff who is here tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from members of the council?
I have a budget question, but that may be better answered by the library staff or?
If it's concerning the budget of the county, yes. If it's the city's budget?
It's, it's the library part of, so it's the county, I assume.
Yes, you can, yes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Darshan Chata. I'm a finance manager at the library. So this, this contract is for additional services, as Isabel explained. So we, the county funds basic hours, I think 25.5 hours are funded by the city, which is, the funding generated through measure N and G. They were approved a long time back. So basically, this is a rollover contract, so we do that contract every year and we're keeping the same amount. So if you look at the budget, this total, like 2.9 million dollar budget is, is funded through different, three different sources. So one source is property tax. So library gets about less than 1% of total property tax collected by the county. And we do, based on the assessed value of each city. So let's say that Albany has a assessed value of about 3.8 billion dollars. So total assessed value from the Albany property is a 3.8 billion dollar. And the total countywide is like 159 billion. So proportionately, whatever revenue we get, we divide that among the cities proportionately. So the Albany has 864,000 dollars out of that property tax revenue. Other, other sources, the tax, the contract with the city. So we have been doing this contract for the last couple of years without increasing any amount. Normally with other cities, we increase 5% every year. But since this is not part of general fund, this money is not coming from general fund, it's a separate fund, as she explained. So whatever remains, so we have, I think there is a reserve kept in that area. And we think that that is as a rainy, rainy day fund. Just in case we need that, so we, we can use it whenever we need. But right now, at this time, county is in a good, like library is in good financial health. So we are also not part of general fund. So library is a part, is a special assessment district. We are basically funded by property tax and some other revenues, but not part of general fund. So whatever we save at the end of the year is goes to a special fund balance, which is available fund balance. So we use that to balance the budget. So as you look, as if you can see at that contract, so we are using 1.3 million dollars from county to balance this budget, to make it a zero net county cost. So there's no appropriation and revenues match. So that, that is, we are using that because we are like in a good financial health right now. We have available fund balance. But the, the balance that city has is also for the library purposes. And we, in future, we might be increasing this. If the situation needs, we will increase this amount. So right now, like that's, we are just renewing this contract. And like, yeah, if you have any question about this funding or anything, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
So where, where I'm confused, am I, am I correct that the fund balance anticipated on June 30th is going to be roughly 912,000? Is the fund balance? I read that somewhere.
900?
On, so the fund balance that in the city's?
That the city's, so that is.
That's the city's fund balance, yes.
And then with the new tax and spending it, it, because if we're going to spend, if the revenue is anticipated to be roughly 810,000 and we're spending roughly 725, if we add that to the 900,000 we already have, it gets us to about, to about 996, a little, a little under a million dollars in reserve. So am I doing the math more or less correctly?
Yes.
It just seems like a lot if we want at least 200,000 and we have close to a million. It's not a bad thing. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
Yes.
Okay. Great.
That is the reserve on the city's part. So city has that money sitting in the reserve fund to be used for library in future. So this contract amount, 725,000, is coming from that fund, and we still have some reserves in that, that fund. So just in case in future, if we need to increase this contract amount, we have like a leverage over there to increase that. But right now, since as I said, we are in a good financial health, so we don't intend to increase this, this year.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from council? All right, not seeing any further questions. Do we have any public comment?
And the project manager will present this report for the thing. And I also want to introduce our new division director, Ramses. He is, he started with us a couple of months ago. He replaced Ben that used to come here. So he is division director. He's in charge of all the library branches. So he's like a brain supervisor, technically.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I, yeah. I think we skipped over a presentation there.
Thank you. Yeah, all right. Yeah. Well, last time I was here, I'd been on the job for about six months. And summer adventure was starting, which is happening again. But let's take a, like a walk through the last year. Again, good evening. Thank you for having us. So June of 2024, we had our summer adventure start. The theme was engaging senses. We offered, we had the vivarium come, we had NorCal bats, we had arts and crafts. We just tried to engage the, the community as much as we could. And I mean, summers are so short these days that it just ends in July, basically. But we had a host of programming highlighted in what I thought is, as an old teen librarian, we offered a talent show where all the community members got to come in and showcase their talents. But the host was one of our old teen volunteers who's now a UC Berkeley student, and she came back to host that for us. And so, yeah, this is sort of our setup in our lobby and then picture of the vivarium visit. If we go to the next slide. Okay, so as we transitioned, I wanted to try some new things at the library. So with help from our social justice department, we partnered with Rocket Dog Adoption, and it was like a first Sunday of the month program. We held it for about five months. I think we adopted about 20 dogs. It's a program I would love to bring back. We actually pivoted and offered it over to San Lorenzo. We needed to figure out how to host it a little bit better in our space. So I don't know, I was talking with the city on how to better do that. We will hopefully come up with an idea. Or maybe we'll adopt cats or something instead. But it was one of our early programs where I noticed that trying something different and new, I think are the first time we offered it. We had almost 100 people show up, and I think nine of those 20 adoptions actually happened on that first event. So I know that the public was definitely interested in it. Like I said, so I would like to try and bring it back in some manner. But continuing on those lines, trying new things, getting, as we pivoted towards the fall, if we go to the next slide, we were getting ready for an election, one in where Albany voters were going to vote on maybe lowering the voting ra, age. And we offered that program at the library and had debate watch parties as well. And as I was going with the trying new things, I had received the breakdown of languages spoken at home for students in the Albany Unified School District. And so looking through that data, we actually offered a Tibetan storytime, which is the one here. And I would like to expand more of that. I noticed that I think the top five languages outside of English in Albany were Cantonese, Spanish, Nepali, and it might have been Mandarin next, but it, there's just a lot of languages. We used to have a Japanese storytime at the library. And so I kind of am thinking it, you know, with Tibetan being an at-risk language, less people are speaking it and understand it year after year. So it is an at-risk language, and so I was happy to bring this program to our library. And along those lines of just trying new things, when we went to the middle school, when the school year started back, we started a Manga Monday where our librarians will go to the middle school at lunchtime. They don't have a real manga collection, so we will bring first and second copies of a bunch of manga, and then they'll check it out there. We're going to possibly pivot to that and then maybe have a book club there also. We'll see. I know the school year is changing a little, so we'll have to see how we can work with that. Or the hours are changing on which days the early release and things like that. So we want to work with them. And, oh yeah, okay, so we, on Halloween, which ended up being on a Thursday, which, actually, can we go back one slide? Sorry. The, the, we have a toddler time on our Thursday. It's our only morning that we're open at 10:00 a.m. And I would notice that after toddler time, we'd have like 90 people hanging out in the children's area. So I thought, let's engage them. So we started a little dance party. And that was just a Halloween, let's try it out. And we've been holding it every Thursday since. We actually found that more people were coming to the little dance party because the parents thought their energy was a little too much for a storytime. But after they started hanging out at the little dance party, they realized that all their friends were there, so now they come to the storytime. So it was also like when, in certain ways, it's engaging the people that are there in the building at the time to do more. At first, it was sort of a, let's just have fun with it and, you know, play music from Coco and have a spooky Halloween. But then we realized we could work on fine motor skills. So they're mimicking us, they're dancing to, you know, head, shoulders, knees and toes, and just toddler songs. But we do freeze dance and all kinds of stuff. And yeah, it's actually one of my favorite parts of the day. We could go to the next slide. Okay. And then, yeah, as we, again, engaging the students for the winter carnival that was at the community center, we hosted one of the high school bands, Vocal Soul, to perform during the winter wonderland. And I think when I was here last time, we had just sort of held our first after-hours rock concert. And since then, we've held three more, actually just one last night. And to kick off our summer adventure, but we'll talk about that later. And, but we've been, so we've had three of them averaging about 80 to 100 people coming. This one, I think, was the one we accidentally set against the Super Bowl, but we still had 100 people show up. Because that's what the Bay does. We don't have to care about the Super Bowl. Especially when a local team's not playing, right? But these have been great experiences. We've had, some of these were our old volunteers. Some of these kids have then become volunteers. Just like last night, probably 80, like 70 of the 80 people were people I do not see at the library ever. We really are bringing in new people all the time for these type of events, so. I don't know, I just feel like it's another opportunity after hours or before hours, which I'm now thinking about maybe doing things before we open, since we've been doing things after we close. So I don't know, we'll see what we can make happen. Winter Wonderland. Um, oh, yeah. So, yeah, as we came into the new year, we started that partnership with the School of Rock, and so we've been hosting those bands. You know, we started the new year with a new year, new you vision board for adults to inspire and reflect and goal set. And then in February, for Black History Month, we worked with Lea Leon, who wrote the double V. Lea Leon, who wrote the Double V Campaign, African Americans Fighting for Freedom at Home and Abroad. This was inspired by the trailblazing work of Betty Reed Soskin, who asked Lea Leon to write this book, and she did. And we donated a copy, donated a full class set of books to the eighth grade history teachers, so that they could support this instruction and education. But I think this was the whole entire eighth grade class. It was about 300 kids participated in this program. Along those lines, along with the Manga Monday and this type of thing, I am really trying to uplift staff or encourage them to do more outreach. The, our teen librarian's been going to the high school, our library tech's been doing the Manga Mondays. We had, I think, 24 class visits. You know, Ocean View really shows up, but we tend to get the fourth graders from the other schools. And so I really, you know, these type of opportunities, I definitely encourage them for staff to to think outside the box. We can do things elsewhere. We don't have to always bring them to the library. So last time I was here, there's only five people I can see there watching, but I didn't even know anyone was watching. And I mentioned, I really wanted to do more sustainability and resilience programming at the library. And then the next day, I got an email from someone who'd been watching the city council meeting. And since then, we've held four sustainability programs. This one we had was an Empowering Homes for the Future, especially related to Albany and rebates that we have, and things like that. We had a microplastics, climate change, and health impacts program. We had a DIY beeswax food wraps making program. We did a, recently, we just had a native trees for the urban forest program. All these have averaged about 50 to 60 people. It's pretty passionate people, too. So, you know, you don't think it's going to be that argumentative about what you should plant in your urban forest, but it definitely is. So we're going to continue offering more of these. It's sort of our every other, every other month, the last Sunday of the month, we've been offering these. So we're going to keep that going and potentially offer more. We rekindled our partner, yeah. We rekindled our partnership with the Albany Film Fest, and we screened Sorry, We're Dead, a feature film by local filmmaker Alex Zadzczek. Probably butchered that, sorry, Alex. And we had one of our teen volunteers, Kira, hold a Q and A with the director afterwards. This film series sort of concluded. Our, our seniors had wanted to start a Cinema Sunday around the end of the year, and we held, I think, about six, seven movies. They came to me, and as an old film major, I was like, yeah, that sounds great. And they're like, yeah, we just want to show classic films. And I was like, yeah, that sounds like such a good idea. And they're like, we love movies from the 70s and 80s. I was like, whoa, those are classics already? Huh, okay. But we did. So we showed, you know, Back to the Future. We just showed Say Anything. I hadn't seen that since the 80s or 90s. That'd been a long time. But they picked the movies, sort of teen movies for teens. And sad to see our seniors go, but the next grade is stepping it up, similar to listening to the tobacco group say, you know, hey, the juniors are going to be seniors, so we're going to have that energy. And, yeah, and so we offered a Albany Comics and fandom expo on, on the 18th. It was a passion project of our teen librarian and our library tech. They just came to me like the beginning, end of last year, saying, could we host something like this? And I said, sure, let's give it a try. So are going to be our first one ever. Let's see what, how it turns out. And to all of our surprises, sort of, it was one of our most significant, significant events we ever held. I think we had almost 1,200 people. And that was just, we gave away over 700 lanyards. We ran out of them. So we know we had more than that amount of people. But then the gate counts and things sort of led to maybe it was over 1,000. We're not sure. But it was a great event. We were thinking we would offer it, you know, every other year, but now it seems like we might have to offer it every year, which would be a great thing. If you want us to do some slides, we can showcase some of what was going on there, right? This is the early part of the day when we had all our lanyards. And we held hourly raffles. We had cosplay. We had VR. We had workshops, panels from graphic artists and novelists, crafts, bands. And it just was a really great all-ages program. There's just a few more slides of this. We had actually the one right back there that was that we had an anime band playing theme songs from anime. And then, yeah, we could slide it through. Yeah. And then just the panelist. And then we could keep going, too. And then, yeah, just sort of, this was, yeah, and then we had to wrap up the day. This was a Dungeons and Dragons adventure band. If you can see, actually, go back one. This die here is like a big die. And so they'd ask, you know, okay, where do we want to go down this path or this path? And then they'd let the people roll the die, and whatever the outcome was, you know, the story would change. The, talking with the dragon master, you know, he said he had like 35 songs, but he usually plays 12 to 14 of them per a set because it's just how the adventure goes, kind of a choose your own adventure. And it was great. And then, yeah. And then this was sort of that main lobby was just, you know, every hour on the hour, I think we gave away 1,000 books. And, yeah, it was a wildly exciting and successful event. And I do want to offer it again, but I also want to offer out an Albany Reads next year. It was one of those programs that I was thinking I'd like to try and do every other year, but maybe there is a way we could offer the Albany Reads and maybe push the expo to fall or something like that. So we were going to check with the school district and see what things are coming. We know the fall will have Solano Stroll, and Dinner with Albany, and some other things coming up. So we don't want, we do, we do want to be mindful of not packing events at the same The, I guess the sneak peek for Albany Reads would be that, it would be the poet and the silk girl is what I'm looking to to offer. One of our local residents, Satsuki Inai, is, was born in Tulley Lake. And next year in March will be the 80th anniversary of Tulley Lake closing. So I was thinking of hosting the Albany Reads from March, April, May, potentially somewhere in there to, you know, discuss, well, those three months are Women's History Month, and then Poetry Month, and then A and HPI. And Satsuki lived that whole life and experience. So I feel like Albany Reads being a month long might be too limiting. So we might as well do the intersectionality of everything and just offer it for a wider amount of time. I think in these times, it's going to be a very rewarding and informative event. Because last, because of me talking with her, now I, you know, how things overhear you, my computer will say, oh, here's a Satsuki in the news. Oh, she was in an event protesting, you know, the alien acts, because that was what was used to take her family's land from her 82 years ago. Right? And so I think we have a lot of heroes in our community. A lot of them tend to be in their senior years, and I think that we should highlight them and celebrate them. So that is my plan.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. I think, jumped the gun earlier, do we have any questions from council at this time? I've seen any, any public comment? All right. Bring it back for council discussion. I'll just open up and say several of the events that were highlighted. I had the honor of attending and being part of. My chief of staff, sometimes he like, he liked to come through like a hurricane or a tornado. But it seemed to be that some of the events at the library, he tended to be his most comment. He loved, when we do go to events, he always finds himself in that little children's corner, and finds Brown Bear, Brown Bear. He can recite the whole thing now. He was pissed when I told him it was time for us to leave the comic and fan expo, because he was in the back reading the book, reading. He held the book upside down, and he's, you would think he's a kid genius, reading the book upside down. No, he just recites it. He knows it very well. But I just want to highlight, like, being able to have events like this in our community are, you know, they're very important for the development of a lot of our younger folks, and opportunity for our younger folks to connect with some of our more senior folks as well. That winter event, my family had also attended, and it was really cool. I go in different spaces and seeing different bands happen. And in fact, just yesterday, I was pulling stuff from my garage, and I found his little, my chief of staff, I had found his little cardboard gingerbread house that he made. It was horrible. It's the most horrendous thing I've seen. It would not pass Albany inspection, that's for sure. But it was a work of art, and I've held on to it. But it, events like that, that I think help us as a family develop core memories. And I know it's doing the same for many in our community. And I think my daughter's been sneaking away to the library. She'd like to be really like, under the radar about it, because it probably makes her feel like she's a rebel. But we know where she's at. But no, I do appreciate much of the effort that has been put in. It definitely has shown over the last couple of years what's been available. And I know certainly when I was a teenager, I was not flocking to the library. But it makes me wonder, what did I miss out on? Great work.
Yeah, well, thank you. I will put out, because I did put out that sustainability and resilience, and, you know, just got an email the next day. So I would say, things we're looking to maybe grow towards this next year would be things that I think will be important, unfortunately, but like, job skills, like working on that, financial literacy, civic engagement, and conversation clubs. Honestly, we do hear a lot still about people being lonely. I think I need to think about starting clubs of any sort, just to have opportunities to to meet that issue. But, yeah, if anybody has ideas or things that they might want to bring to me, I'm always available.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to say, you know, we are so lucky to have you, because you are just doing an amazing job. And, you know, just thinking outside the box, doing all these programs. I was so excited about the con. I was bummed I couldn't be there. I had an open house. But, but I just, I, I really love your engagement and your enthusiasm. And, you know, you just are packing in a lot of opportunities for a lot of people. And I so am very appreciative. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. That's amazing, all the programming to make the library even more of a civic space. So thank you to you and your staff. Do actually realize I have a question. How do you fit 1,200 people in the library?
But, but kind of like the, like you were mentioning, the, the winter wonderland made me, seeing that made me think, okay, if we use all this space, we could do this. And, and the expo that was held the, the April before also by the city, right? And they, I mean, they got to use the parking lot and things. But I was like, you know, we could, I mean, I didn't think we were going to get that number, honestly. But it is overwhelming. But we had the staffing and the support and just the thinking. I think about this a lot, because if we have, you know, I check the gate count and look at things, and, you know, the people that come through and pass through in our day. And there's times where, you know, might go three or four days without anyone voicing any kind of complaint or something. And you figure you get 1,200 people in a place. And I think one person complained about something, and it was, you just think, okay, well, we're 11, 99, and one. I'll take that. That's awesome.
I think I saw from the photos that part of it was in the foyer or the lobby, correct? And then was all the rest of it in the library?
No, the community center was fantastic. They did agree to let us use the space. So we had, in the community center's space, the authors and the panel talks. And then where they were doing the gingerbread at the winter wonderland, we had workshops in the, in room one and two.
Okay.
We were trying to get really, we were going to try and get downstairs and get some woodworking going on, but, you know, we didn't get that wild.
Yeah, I was curious if the, the community center was involved. So thank you.
No, that, that expanded our space. No, our space, I mean, we, at a couple of different times, even during our little dance party, we've been like, what is the capacity in this room? We're at like 120, and I'm thinking, uh...
Push it. I might thanks the city staff as well.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. We've been, yeah, collaborating with the city here and there, and it's been great. So I just, yeah, it's been wonderful.
I'll also express appreciation for the, the explanation of how the funding is split on the 1% of property tax. I served on the board for a year, but I never quite understood that it was by assessed value rather than population. So I appreciate learning that. So thank you for being here.
Also, like Albany is valued pretty high.
Do we have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to say my thanks also. I mean, it's incredible, though, the amount of diversity of things that you've done at the library. And then, to me, just as important is you're reaching out to the schools and actually, so leaving the library campus. And I think that's really incredible, because I think, you know, over the years, I think one of the things I've learned is, sometimes you need to go to where your group or your audience is, as opposed to always asking your audience to come to you. But then, you also hold these incredible events, which expands the audience. And I think that's really great to hear. And I'm super excited about all the things you have done and all the things you plan on doing this next year.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I'll just add my thanks for being a great librarian, putting on amazing programs for our community, and just looking forward to what's coming.
Yeah.
Especially Albany Reads. That's one of my favorites.
Yeah, me too. So, and we should be bringing back what was called Brown Bag, but we're changing it to Community Voices. But that, I have a staff member who's going to be leading that and trying to get that to be a monthly program again, where we bring in community members who've maybe written a book, or are an expert in something, and they just come in to inform the public of what they're up to, or what they want to learn about.
Is there any thought of partnering with the Y? Originally, that was a Y library.
No, we used to do that program with Mary, I believe, right? So I met the new director at one of the events. And I, we've talked, but I don't know if it would have to be in partnership. We might put it on the weekend. And I think that used to be on Mondays. But maybe we do both. I'm into more. I mean, as you said, meeting people where they are. Actually, forgot about another program we started, which was, because of that Thursday early release, Middle School Day, there'd just be all these tweens in the building. And I'd be like, why are they all here at 2:15? But then we started a game on program. And all of a sudden, we just put 20 kids into the meeting room to play video games. But then it led to chess, and then it led to other games. And then it led to fiber arts and movies afterwards. So we turned what were 25 kids playing in a corner into three programs a month, or whatever, a one weekly program, and then three other rotating programs. So, yeah, try to just, you know, meet people where they are and/or go find them where they are. And in Albany, it's a little easier to do, square footage wise. But I appreciate it. Thank you all.
No, and thank you very much. I do know we have Resolution 25, 202533 on the table before any, entertain anything. I do want to say lastly, thanks for the reminder about the dancing classes, our sessions for the little ones. I've been meaning to take my little guy there. He now has his own move called the Omi Wiggle. And he loves going to different parks and singing out that he's doing the Omi Wiggle. I'm sure he would love to demonstrate the Omi Wiggle to his peers. But at this time, I think it's probably appropriate to entertain a motion on Resolution 202533.
I'll move with adoption, 202533.
I'll second.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanser Amara?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will now open public hearing for a couple items. We will start with item uh, nine dash one, amending City of Albany Master Fee Schedule. Uh, city staff.
Good evening, Council. Um, Cassie Murphy, I am your finance manager here at the city. And I will be walking us through the proposed changes to the fiscal year 26 Master Fee Schedule. Brief overview of what that is. Uh, the Master Fee Schedule consolidates various fees charged by departments across the city. Uh, the schedule's updated annually and is effective for the uh, city's fiscal year. So it runs from July 1 through June 30. Uh, the revised schedule was posted to the city's website in advance of this evening's meeting. Um, as well as a notice of public hearing was published in compliance with government code. Uh, the fees on the schedule are set at a level intended to recover some or all of the costs of providing city services, programs and facilities. To help maintain cost recovery, staff is recommending that several fees increase based on the Consumer Price Index, or the CPI, the Bay Area for All Items. This is historically the factor used by the city for this schedule. And the increase from calendar year 24 to 2025 was 2.76%. The posted, uh, the posted schedule has increases highlighted in green. So any highlighted lines on the schedule have changed across either that CPI or um, proposed department changes, aside from that basic CPI inflator. Uh, the changes proposed by departments are typically done in alignment with new laws or ordinances. Um, but in addition, a few departments did utilize data to update fees for better cost recovery. Uh, one of the overarching themes this year, costs for staffing were updated um, or added to multiple sections of this year's schedule. Uh, these rates help departments to better identify the costs associated with operations as well as providing a rate for billing external customers if necessary. And to increase the fees for staffing, the city's salary tool provided by TruComp, which was formerly Gov Invest, calculated staff costs by blending base salary with benefits. And then those costs were applied um, on the schedule. You'll see that in the administrative fees section. Um, a staffing cost line was moved from administrative fees to the police section as it was a police department staffing line. Uh, there was a section added to the Public Works um, Department Pages of the Master Fee Schedule. A staff time section was also added to our Fire Department section this year. Um, the rates in this section align with a salary survey that's provided to Office of Emergency Services by the Fire Department each year. And they utilize that for um, when city staff is assisting on external incidents. Uh, finally, Recreation and Community Services completed a fee study in anticipation of the fiscal year 26 Master Fee Schedule. And the data used from that survey was um, the department was able to bring fees closer to operational costs. So for that reason, that department did not use the basic CPI inflator. Uh, so that's a brief overview of the schedule, what's covered in the staff report. And with that, turn it over if there's any questions or discussion items.
All right. Thank you, city staff. We, do I start with taking public testimony? Yeah, do we have any questions from city council? Not seeing any questions. Uh, I will now use this time uh, during the open public hearing to take any calls for public testimony. Seeing none, I will bring it back to city council for discussion. Any? Go for it.
Thank you, finance manager for the presentation. And thank you, city staff for all the various upgrades that are above and beyond this usual CPI. Much appreciated.
Any other comment?
And we'll go ahead and um, move resolution 202534.
I'll second.
Thank you, city clerk.
Councilmember Hanser Amara.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Motion carries.
All right, we will now close public, public hearing on item nine dash one. Uh, and we will now open public hearing for item nine dash two, proposed by annual budget for fiscal years 25, 26 and 26, 27. City staff.
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council members. Rena Schwartz, your finance director. Um, this is uh, part two of your budget process. If the clerk will go ahead and start our PowerPoint. Um, this is the hearing where we are requesting adoption of the biannual budget for fiscal years 25, 26 and 26, 27. Um, as we discussed uh, on the 19th, um, we have a two-year budget cycle. So uh, we start in the December before the odd year, so the December of the even year, getting ready for uh, kicking off the process. And then in February, uh, the council typically does their strategic planning workshop. We uh, take a look at the budget, we kick off that process and move into budget preparation. We're now in the part of the uh, process where we have the hearings and then budget adoption will occur. Yippee. And uh, we'll roll into the rest of the two-year uh, process. There is typically um, a point at which we uh, request or uh, add amendments for the second year of the process, but it's a much less intensive process than we go through before the beginning of each biennial cycle, uh, which is great. So it allows us to um, take a look uh, partway through, but not have to necessarily kinda reinvent the wheel every year um, as we're trying to move through all of the other items that uh, are on the finance calendar. As I mentioned on the 19th, this council's strategic plan goals do guide the uh, development of the budget as well as the departmental work in putting it together. So uh, we are looking to ensure that the departments um, are having their programs roll up under the strategic plan goals in addition to the day-to-day operations. And so uh, those pieces do um, align with uh, where we see budget going for those departments. Since the May 19th uh, date where we had our prior budget hearing, not a lot of changes have been made. Um, we did do some clarifications, some corrections, um, a few uh, you know, typo corrections, word corrections, et cetera, but there were no material changes to the budget. That was proposed on the 19th, so it is essentially the same budget. More information was included as we uh, finished out all of our additional fund schedules. But uh, the information that was presented on the 19th is essentially the same information that is in the budget document uh, in front of you this evening for um, adoption. The uh, as a recap, uh, we had a few places where we had, um, well, let me back up. The most important thing, the big recap. Is everybody, yes, everybody, everybody go, we love zero. No, okay. It's the only time you've ever heard somebody say, I love being a zero, right? Um, but uh, that being said, uh, we um, did align revenues in the uh, budget to match more closely on our actual experience from prior budget uh, cycles. So we um, have a better handle on where we think we're really likely to end up as opposed to uh, some of the years of more uncertainty coming out of COVID and, and budgeting quite conservatively. So the goal was not to budget aggressively this year, but to budget closer to where we see those trend lines. We do see some continued weakness in sales tax growth, so we'll just continue to watch that. That's not unique to Albany. That's true across Alameda County and across the state, unfortunately. Um, property tax is still growing well here, but uh, our assessor here in Alameda County does expect that to slow down a bit. So we'll continue to watch that. Um, and just a reminder, we do have a number of special funds in the city that support work that is home-funded, if you will, in the general fund. And so we do have transfers from those special uh, revenue funds into the general fund, which help fund those um, programs where there are um, relevant expenditures that match those revenue sources. On the expenditure side, um, we um, did some work to really try to align salary and benefit costs with um, our recent experience as well as um, increases that have been approved through collective bargaining agreements and equity um, adjustments that were done through the compensation survey. That alone, if uh, with no other changes, would have um, caused the budget to go up by about a million point eight, which was, was not a happy number when I first saw it. Um, there were a couple of things that were uh, put in place to offset that. One is that there are three um, vacant positions that will be held unfunded. So that's about $400,000 um, to help offset that as well as salary savings for all but the very smallest of our departments. That's a recognition that we always have turnover. All, all cities always have turnover. And we're just pulling those savings forward into the budget process. So we're trying to make a somewhat more accurate uh, estimation of where we're going to be with both revenues and expenditures, but on the expenditure side, looking at those labor costs. So that brought down our overall um, labor increase to under a million dollars, which was a, a big um, a big savings for us in terms of getting to a balanced budget for FY26. Um, we have maximized the use of special purpose revenues. This includes um, EMS, but also uh, some of the other programmatic special funds that primarily exist um, in the Public Works Department, um, which we use for supporting their programs. Um, there was an increase, not surprisingly, in the annual uh, required payment for our unfunded pension liability. That went up about just under 300,000. Well, we expect to see that continue and we'll continue to look at strategies to um, manage that. But that is expected to continue to go up pretty steadily for at least the next about six years. How long, how steep, how much, will really depend on, ultimately on two things. Market returns um, that CalPERS um, achieves uh, over those years as well as um, any periodic changes they make in program assumptions, um, which can also drive our costs. We will know more about the next round of potential changes in the CalPERS pension calculation formulas, if you will, uh, in about a year. So more to come on that. Oh, um, next, um, just a little reminder, there are some, uh, there's funding in the Recreation Community Services Budget as well as in the um, oh, it's not community development. That should say economic development. It's been in community development, it's now in the manager's office. I apologize. Still 38,000. It's still for that purpose, uh, but it should say economic development. Um, and uh, in addition, there is city council discretionary funding of 35,000 proposed in this year's um, budget, up a little bit from prior years. Uh, the next couple of slides are just a reminder of the, oh. Missed my own notes. Let's talk about staffing. I'm having trouble with these last two slides. Um, there was recent state legislation, AB 2561, which requires that cities report to uh, their councils at least once a year um, in a public hearing on um, staffing issues, including vacant positions, whether or not any of the bargaining units represented in the city have a greater than 20% vacancy rate, as well as recruitment and retention uh, review of practices and improvements um, intended to uh, address the sort of chronic staffing issues that local governments are facing. The good news is, um, so of our total 118.3 FTE positions, we have eight positions that are currently vacant. Three that will be held unfunded for the um, purposes of the biannual budget. Um, the other five are either undergoing recruitment already or the departments and HR are in the planning process for doing so. Um, none of our recognized employee organizations has vacancies in excess of 20%, which is great. Um, it means that we're staying on top of that, even in areas like uh, police, where it can be very difficult to keep hold of um, police officers. So we, we unfortunately have a, a regular recruitment effort going in that regard. In order to continue to work on improving recruitment and retention practices, we've been looking at um, opportunities to improve our pre-employment and background process. We're looking at ways to do more promotion for open recruitments. Where, where do they get posted? Who do we reach out to? How do we um, manage those processes? And making sure that we have um, very close coordination between the department that has the hiring vacancy and our HR department, so that we can make sure that each of those parties is doing all the pieces they can within their own um, realm to help us move forward with recruitment and retention. So we're in relatively good shape from a staffing perspective. Um, but it is a, an area that we continue to pay attention to and that we will um, continue to report to the council on. Uh, with that, now, as I was going to say, the next several slides um, are, are not for detailed reading on a screen, cause that's way too much information on a screen. All those years of uh, getting feedback on presentations, this would be a flunk of a slide. But it's really just there to show the um, volume of data that is included in your budget book. Um, so we have an overview of the general fund and then we have the departmental budgets. Um, there is a lot more information in the budget document itself that includes um, information on departmental operations as well as uh, all of those funding pieces. Uh, the budget itself also has, as you're well aware, information on all of the other uh, special funds, debt service funds, reserve funds, all of the other different types of funds that are not our primary operating funds, which are really the general fund, our EMS fund and our sewer operations fund. Uh, but there are another, I don't know, 20 or 30 funds that um, we have that um, support operations in various ways in addition to funds uh, and expenditures that occur on the capital side. This is in front of you tonight, the operating budget. It is not your capital budget. You will see your capital budget, I believe, in July-ish of this year. And uh, there is some interaction, obviously, between fund balance numbers for many of those special revenue and capital funds. Um, what's in your resolution this evening in front of you is just the operational impacts. And so where you see estimated fund balance numbers for uh, year end 26 and year end 27, those are based on the operating uh, appropriations that you are being asked to approve this evening. As capital appropriations are made, those numbers will change, but you will see those as those capital appropriations are made. This is really intended to capture what the operating picture is and the impact of the operations on those funds. So just to kinda clarify what, what that piece is gonna look like. And then just a brief reminder, uh, it's good to look ahead. Uh, we, you know, it's, it's hard to have a crystal ball, but you still gotta take your best shot at looking forward and seeing what we think the future might hold financially. Um, so uh, we um, have done some scenarios and looked at some potentials. And if we look at the, the graph, which is just one potential scenario, the good news is that the um, little, if we go to the chart so I can show my little teeny tiny bar. See that little zero? Yeah, that's my favorite bar ever. Um, I don't, I don't drink, so that's it. That's my bar. Um, so unfortunately, what you see is that FY27 is immediately out of balance again. The reason that the recommendation is to leave that be for now and ask the council to approve that budget, acknowledging that if it were to all play out exactly as programmed, that it would mean- that it would mean a $1.1, $1.2 million appropriation from fund balance, is that in a year, a little less than a year, we'll know more than we know today about what FY '27 is going to look like. And so we have ample opportunity to make those corrections to balance that budget. What we can see now is we've made tremendous progress, and we still have some work to do. And so that's really the picture that I think, you know, this or any number of scenarios will tell you. And, you know, we'll continue to take a look at it, but that's really the purpose for having that picture there. So the final piece is that this evening, different from the hearing on the 19th, you have six resolutions in front of you that are part of our budget process. The first is the resolution that would adopt the operating budgets for '26 and '27. As I mentioned, those year-end fund balance numbers are, reflect the impact of the operating budget only, and will be, continue to be updated as capital appropriations are made. And so those numbers will continue to change. The next resolution is the annual approval of the tax rate for the pension property tax override. It's recommended at the same level it's been at pretty much every year since 1982, '83, and provides the maximum amount of funding we can achieve from that particular rate for covering the costs of both a contribution toward our closed pension fund, the old city police and fire pension fund, as well as a portion of the CalPERS costs for police and fire. The next resolution, there are a number of special parcel taxes that are collected on the property tax bill. That resolution goes through each of those measures, makes a recommendation, identifies what the current rate is, what the maximum rate could be, based on the formula that was identified in the measure that put that in place, and a recommendation on what the FY '25, '26 rate should be. In all cases, it is the maximum that we can bring forward to the council this year, the exception, as was briefly discussed in the library item. The two library measures are both, have been held for the last several years at a steady rate, because during COVID, the costs were so much less for the library. We continue to have those parcel taxes assessed. And so we have a balance that one can provide for emergencies, but also can handle some capital improvements that we may need to do. And so while it looks like a lot of money when you start looking at, you know, $900,000, it's, you'd be surprised, that'll go lickety-split if we have a couple of projects. So we continue to watch that, but the recommendation is to hold the library parcel tax rates the same as they have been for the last several years. The fourth resolution is our annual appropriations limit, which, under state law, we're required to keep our spending within a certain limit, based on our tax revenues. And we are well below that limit, so that just provides the calculation and the approval that we are within our appropriations limit. The fifth resolution is something that was done, I think, for the first time two years ago with the last biennial budget. A small appropriation, sort of pre-made appropriation from some of our reserve funds to allow departments, if they have unexpected needs that come up, there isn't, and it's within the city manager's signature authority, there's no other reason that it would need to come to council, there isn't the need to take the extra time at that point to come, need to come to council for the appropriation, but the appropriation is in place. All the other spending controls remain in place. This just sets up the appropriation so that there isn't a further delay if the department has a need for meeting some unexpected expense. And then the last resolution is the adoption of the city's investment policy. There is no recommended change to the investment policy this year. It's exactly the same as it's been in prior, prior to, well, we made some minor changes last year, but essentially exactly the same as last year. The council is required with a staff-level treasurer position to annually delegate authority to manage the investment function to staff, and so that's what this does. So your packet had in it both the reformatted, but same text, investment policy, as well as the resolution adopting it. And with that, we are, I'm absolutely happy to answer any questions, but we would recommend that the mayor open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from folks on the dice? Go for it.
Surprise, surprise. Only one that just came up, and I will thank staff for answering my many, many questions over the last few meetings on this, including today. I was curious when we were discussing the library, property taxes, support the library in one of the prior items, if capital spending from those was eligible by the language of adoption? It sounds like it is.
I believe so. I know that I spoke with Isabel some time ago, and we were looking at making sure that we understood exactly what pieces could be handled from within those funds. So we'll make sure that whatever gets brought forward, obviously, is consistent with that language. But yeah, there should be some flexibility to do some of that work, yes.
Okay. And I certainly can receive the information by email, but if you happen to have examples of the kinds of things that could or could not be funded in your understanding?
Something that I would speak to.
So examples are replacing the carpet, painting, it could be materials and supplies. So it's pretty flexible, as long as it's basically, you know, it's part of the building. So it's, we're responsible for maintaining the building, so we can do upgrades to the building itself.
So I think there's an item out there of HVAC replacement is needed? I think that's one of the capital projects, maybe, if I recall, for the community center slash library. I don't know if they have independent HVAC systems.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, okay.
The HVAC system was redone less than 10 years ago, like, not very long ago.
Something else, then, okay. But it could fund that, at least for the library building?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into it further. I think we have a big system that basically provides HVAC for the entire building. So potentially, yes, I guess we could take a percentage, you know, for the, yeah, providing HVAC system, HVAC system for the library.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Not seen any. We will now use.
I was going to just hold it, but since we went down the route of asking about the library, so let me make sure I understand this correctly. So staff is recommending that we not change the rate, that we not increase the rate that we're charging for the library fee assessment. And that's because we have a reserve. Are there any anticipated capital expenditures? Because as you mentioned, you can go through $900,000 very quickly. I'm worried that we're losing the ability to increase the rate potentially a little bit in time and build a bigger capital reserve for future improvements or maintenance requirements on the library. So this is the second time that I've heard that we have not increased the rate, and I think it made sense coming out of COVID. But I'm just nervous that this is now twice that we've missed an opportunity to increase the rate, knowing that even a small increase in the rate over time can build us a larger capital reserve, as opposed to waiting to find out that we have a $1.5 million renovation or something to do. We could be taking a more proactive effort of actually increasing the rate now to build a larger nest egg.
Two things on that topic. One, I don't believe there's any very large outstanding item that we are aware of. Two, we are in the process, Public Works is in the process of doing facility assessments to understand what our facility needs are. That would include the building that we're responsible for, for the library. And so I think there'll be some more information coming within the next year on that. So that isn't immediate to tonight, but it is forthcoming. And then the last piece I'd add on that is, one of the things that we've done for the last two years, and is repeated again this evening, is that we are showing the council and identifying what the maximum rate could be that could be charged. And so we're not losing, I mean, we don't necessarily want to, you know, have a 45% increase in somebody's rate, or the dollar amount that they pay. But we are capturing the authority for that CPI adjustment every year, and essentially banking it. And so on the page that talks about the two library rates, you'll see that the maximum rate is quite a bit more than the rate that we're proposing. And so we do, that gives us yet another potential mechanism to maneuver through that. So it's not saying, well, okay, we're just going to adopt whatever it is, $69, and change for one of the rates, and that's it. And next year, we're stuck at 1.5% or whatever it is. The maximum rate is a lot more than 69. I don't remember what the number is. But it means that if the council needs to move to that next year, we have some additional flexibility that we might not otherwise. So those three things together, I think, help put us in a better position if the council wants to wait through to get some more of those assessments done.
Thank you. So again, I appreciate that clarity, that we still, we would have the room to go up to the maximum, not that we would, not that as a council, we would ever want to make that jump in one year. I still worry, I mean, off the top of my head, just thinking about climate action and things that we've talked about in the past, proposals that members of public have made in the past. I understand Public Works is doing an assessment, but, you know, thinking about our libraries, if someone had asked the question, and I have no idea if it's feasible, and I have no idea if we'd be legally allowed to do it, but putting solar panels on top of where we currently park cars and using that energy to offset the cost of electricity for us running the library, that is a capital improvement project. I have no idea what the cost of that is. There might be grants out there. But again, we have an opportunity this year to increase the rate, to just start building a little bit of a nest egg, because I find it, I would be very surprised if we got a capital improvements program back from Public Works, didn't say that there weren't things we couldn't do at the library that could help us meet our various goals that we have as a community.
I'd like to add, I think it's likely premature for us to do it for this particular discussion. I think it would benefit the council to see the return of the capital improvement plan program. As you recall, from that study session, facility maintenance is an issue, but we have a number of facilities, and those will be prioritized based on need. This is one of our newer buildings, and it has had some remodels over time. Any HVAC upgrades would need to be, as usual, with our, the way we do work, a major project that's analyzed at different levels and scales and needs analysis. So I don't think it would be anything so timely that we would need to find new funding for that at this point in time. And I would also caution against banking too much, given that this really was primarily for operations of the facility. And, but, hearing the interest and knowing that there is some opportunity within the language of that tax measure, we can definitely define that much more thoughtfully going forward and thinking of our CIP program.
I just quickly read the purpose of both, and so I am also interested in the city attorneys' perspective on capital spending and how much out of this, not right now, obviously, but should you take a look at it in the future.
All right. Thank you again, city staff, for your report. We will now use this time during open public hearing to take any calls for public testimony on item 9-2. Do we have any?
We don't have members of the public.
All right, no public testimony. We will close public testimony at this time and bring it back to, close public testimony on this, for the public hearing on this item. We'll now bring it to discussion to council. We do have six resolutions on the table. I will entertain a motion early if anyone feels ever so brave, but if anyone has anything to say at this moment?
Can I ask you a question? Can we make one motion if we call out all of them? Okay. I'm willing to make that motion. So I move reapprove resolution 25, 20, 25, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40.
And I'll second. I had to jump in there to break up McQuaid, Preston, Jordan. First and seconds.
We got our line in.
I was going to jump in earlier today, but you guys are very fast.
Thank you for that long-winded motion. City clerk.
Complete motion.
Complete.
Councilmember McKee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very.
For all the resolutions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
FY '26.
That's also going on a T-shirt. We will now close the public hearing on this item. And we'll move on to, no unfinished business, no new business. We'll move on to item number 12, council subcommittee reports. We'll start with councilmember McKee.
So I was able to attend the open house that staff and consultants had, and it was a really wonderful event. It was really exciting to see all the people, members of the community come through the space. It was great to see the diversity of age of people. So we had young children, we had young couples, we had high schoolers, we had seniors. So it was really wonderful to see everyone there. And then I also attended a CalCity's board meeting. At the board meeting, we got an update on some legislation that's going through. I think the one other thing that came out of that was just, well, actually, I can't talk about that, so that's something I'll talk to you individually about, but the, what's it called? City PAC. Can't spend, I'll talk to you all about that after, but there is a City PAC event in June. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Thank you. I attended the Housing Authority Budget and Negotiating Committee, which I was elected vice chair. We met in closed session for a very long time, reviewing the MOU with our one bargaining unit, SEIU. And we approved the operating budget for FY '26, which will now go to the rest of the whole commission at our next meeting. You know, again, the uncertainty of funding from the federal government makes it really difficult to make a budget, and we do expect to have a deficit. I was also at the planning meeting. I thought it was great. Whoever thought of having a little kids area, that was really good. It gave the little guy something to do. I also attended the Black Graduation at Albany High School, the Jewish Parent Engagement Group Shabbat, and the pride gathering yesterday. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuaid. Councilmember Jordan?
The Alameda County Transportation Commission met since our last meeting, and the big news there was it approved the 2026 countywide investment plan, which I guess validated the $515,000 grant that Albany is receiving from that plan for the Cleveland Avenue Bike Way project. Yeah, that's it.
I did attend the Alameda County Waste Management Authority Board meeting, and it was primarily focused on looking at some was primarily focused on looking at some, watch, watching some bills coming through and also just in taking a look at, reviewing our executive director with Stop Waste. And nothing but great things said about him, and I couldn't agree more. Lucky to have Timothy Burrows, so he's really great on outreach and engagement and just being available to anybody whenever I have a question. I'm able to email him, and he's right on it with an answer from either staff or himself. So it's really great to be part of that board, that group. They're just doing terrific things and lots of new stuff on the horizon, so thanks.
Thank you very much. For myself, we do have a mayor's conference coming up very soon, going to be here in Albany, hope to see you all there. We did not have a, we've not had a AVR community meeting since our last council meeting, and nothing's set yet for the Giltrack Farms, still in motion, though, I've been trying to pick up those conversations with UC staff. I do understand part of the issue there is, there's been some transition and turnover with the professors in the respective department at UC Berkeley, so just getting that all situated. Terms of things happening in the community, there's quite a bit, hence my voice is also a little strained. I got to, I was invited to speak at the Albany Middle School Latin Promotion Celebration Event earlier this week, and then right before this meeting, I was invited guest speaker for the Albany High Latin Graduation Celebration. May have snuck myself several tacos on the way out without anyone looking as well. Had also got to show our city in a much bigger and broader light beyond our city limits. I was the commencement speaker for San Jose State College of Engineering, and as well was the commencement speaker for my former community college, Contra Costa College. Definitely made my rounds around the graduation circuit. I kind of hope nobody else taps me anymore. I think I'm gassed out. Something else that I did do was, I did a site visit, was invited by the East Bay Regional Park District to go do a restoration site visit over at the Morgan Territory Preserve. We got to look at all the fantastic work that they've been doing essentially in an outdoor lab with, for pond restoration, and I learned so much, I was geeking out. It was highlighted that that area is one of the last areas in which California grizzlies were seen in Contra Costa County and Alameda County. And so I was really taken aback by that, like, being in that moment, standing where some, where grizzlies previously roamed. And we were talking a lot as well about invasive species and predation. I won't get into the nitty-gritty of that, but I will say, it was quite amazing to see that they don't have an issue with red-eared sliders, turtles, creating issues of competition with our western pond turtles. If you go to Jewel Lake in Tilden Park, you'll see the red-eared sliders and the western pond turtles, and sometimes you might see them duking it out. It is probably not the most sightly thing you want to observe, but to understand and see that there's no issue of that type of invasive species condition says a lot. And so they've been working very strategically to restore their ponds so that they're more hospitable for the native species that are there. And then lastly, I don't believe I mentioned this before, but I have been tag teaming in with our neighbors in Berkeley at the Berkeley Historical Society. My great-grandmother is one, was part of one of the first handful of families of Mexican descent that established themselves in West Berkeley, and so they've been working on trying to profile me because the very unique full-circle moment of someone who was a pillar in that community, who's descendant ended up becoming, joining elected office here in Albany in a neighboring city. But I mention that because I also had lunch with the current pastor of a church called El Gogota. El Gogota is now based in Richmond, California, on McDonnell Ave. El Gogota Church is a church that my great-grandmother had established in 1938 on Fourth Street in West Berkeley, and is one of the very first Spanish-speaking churches that created and provided space for a very specific community, kind of what I touched on earlier, a community that felt harmed or were concerned about not being accepted in certain spaces, especially in the '30s. So shared that because I learned a lot about my great-grandmother. I thought I knew a lot about her previously, but the Birthed English Historical Society has a wealth of information, and it was really amazing to be tapped in and then see someone who's carrying on a legacy in a very different way that's not family-oriented or family, not oriented, not family-connected. But yes, was a very busy person these last couple weeks. Unfortunately, couldn't attend as many events as I wanted to. I've been dealing with a muscle strain that has limited my mobility, and Chief of Staff is not happy. But yeah, that rounds out my activities. With that, I will open it for any public comments. Not seeing any. Moving on to item number 13, any future agenda item? Anything from the public? Not seeing any. Any from council? Not seeing any. All right. I join, before I get to the announcement for upcoming meetings, you can find them on our city website, our revamped city website. And with that said, I join this meeting at 9:12. Good night.